Before we begin our roll call, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll apologize in advance, my voice, and somehow in the last three days, I've gotten laryngitis. I'm not sick or anything, just have no strength in my voice, so my apologies for that. Let's show we have a roll call, Ms. Megan, please.
Yes. Joe Mann.
Here.
Jim Bomker. Dale Robbins. DG Garcia. Charlie Janks. Tom Salberg. Phil Foryer.
Here.
Gene Huchel.
Here.
And Troy Mullinex.
Here.
Thank you.
That would be Sean, we got a forum, and we have next is general business to review the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to strike the preliminary periodic comprehensive plan update work program from the agenda. I didn't get a chance to do that because I got sick instead.
And two hundred workshops.
And?
There's our motion to remove that in second.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Salberg, a second by Commissioner Bomker, all in favor, I propose. Thank you. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Motion to approve, please. To approve agenda.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Salberg, second by Commissioner Bomker, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Thank you. Proven amendment from January ten. Any? Prove? Oh, go on. And move to approve the other one. Second. With our Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Janks. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I propose. Thank you. Workshops. Ms. Key.
Thank you. So, we're going to talk a little bit about climate resiliency today. We did, there were changes to the Growth Management Act that happened last year, and we did receive a grant for $400,000 spread over to to biennium. Again, climate change and resiliency element was added to the requirements for our periodic comprehensive plan update by House Bill 1170 and House Bill 1181. It included both the mitigation sub-element, which needs to address reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, GHG, and/or reduction in vehicle miles traveled, VMT. There's also the climate resiliency sub-element, and that includes impact to the 100-year stormwater and flood plains, impact to roof snow loads, wildfire risks, et cetera. So, in terms of the mitigation sub-element, there's several potential pathways. Greenhouse gas and/or vehicle mile traveled reduction goals and policies is one pathway. GHG reduction goals and policies using an ecology framework, it's one of the resources available to us. Vehicle miles traveled study and evaluation with greenhouse gas reductions through transportation policies. Developing greenhouse gas reduction goals and policies based on an emissions inventory analysis. And there are tools available, both through Ecology and WashDOT, to achieve these. Now, again, as I mentioned, we did get a grant from Ecology, and we'll be hiring a consultant to assist us in this. One of the things I will say is that the City of Liberty Lake is well-positioned to address this based upon existing policies that promote multimodal transportation options, that we are, heavy emphasis on walkability and bikability, and we can reinforce some of those goals to meet these requirements. But there is a scientific component to the analysis that we do need the assistance of a consultant to achieve. So, the second piece is the resiliency sub-element. We need to audit plans and policies. For example, we have the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Spokane County. Liberty Lake has an annex to that, and they're just re-upping that process right now. One of the things that we could really look at through the course of this is to establish our own more detailed policies related to things like evacuation in the event of a wildfire, wildfire prevention strategies, et cetera. So, there are some things that we could do. But again, we need to audit plans and policies and assess vulnerabilities and risks. Potential pathways exist to either select, adopt existing goals and policies, develop new policies, or adopt mitigation strategies, or any combination thereof. Tools are available for this mitigation planning through UFW mapping for to assess the vulnerabilities and risks, or the US Climate Resiliency Assessment Toolkit. So, we do have some tools, and we will be leaning on those as we go through this process. The mitigation sub-element, potential path, oh, I'm going in the wrong direction, I'm sorry. So, the scope for the grant that we just received from Department of Commerce includes four basic elements. Public engagement, which includes identifying community partners, implementing public and tribal engagement, and developing a public engagement plan, results, and summaries. So, this is, the public engagement piece will extend over the course of developing the comp plan. One of the things I want to say about this is because these particular elements are going to cross-pollinate with so many other elements of the comp plan in terms of housing, in terms of transportation, in terms of our capital facilities plan, et cetera. So, and we will use this as kind of a springboard to address the other public engagement aspects of the comprehensive plan. We will need to adopt a public engagement plan for the entire comp plan, but the consultant will get us kick off the process with the piece for climate resiliency. And there will be special stakeholder groups and community groups that will need to be involved in this particular piece of it. Also mitigation, we need to inventory the scope, scale, and sources of greenhouse gas emissions, and identify emissions reductions priorities, priority actions and targets. For resiliency, we need to identify climate impacts, audit plans and policies, and assess our vulnerability and risks. And at the end of, when we finish all of these things, the ultimate goal is to is to establish climate goals and policies. And we're going to use a climate advisory team to assist us with this, develop climate goals and policies, and then ultimately organize and integrate the goals and policies into the rest of the comp plan, because as I said, there's a lot of overlap with other elements of the comprehensive plan. So, the deliverables for this grant are really going to happen between now and June of 2026, when the comp plan is adopted. And our reimbursement for the grant is dependent upon these deliverables. So, as we deliver these, we will get reimbursed for the elements within the plan. So, the first piece is, the first deliverable is the draft public engagement and tribal engagement plan, followed by the final engagement plan and results summary, the greenhouse gas data inventory spreadsheet, and the memo regarding priority actions and greenhouse gas reduction targets, climate vulnerability web map, the climate vulnerability risk assessment, climate advisory team charter, final rules and policies for the climate element, and the climate element of the comp plan, which is ultimately the goal of this. And before you, I don't expect you to be able to read this on the screen, but before you, you should have the climate planning element schedule. I thought this would be a helpful way to really visualize the work program over the next little bit more than two years to complete this project and just understand how the various pieces fit together. This, I did want to share with you that this is one of the elements within our comprehensive plan work program, and we will be providing you with similar information on the work program. We'll be doing a high-level overview, I will have it for you at your next meeting, and then we'll start to really populate this as we get into it. One of the first pieces for us with the comp plan is going to also be the public engagement plan. So, at any rate, that is the climate resiliency grant that we received and the scope of it, which will need to be incorporated into our comprehensive plan periodic update. Does anybody have any questions, comments regarding this?
Good question, Lisa. Are there any other communities that have used this same grant and developed this program today?
Can you please speak a little bit more into the microphone, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Are there any other communities that have used this grant, developed this program today?
Yeah, so there's a number of communities that have received this grant. We are going to be, the schedule for these periodic comprehensive plan updates is anywhere from, some are due in June of 2024, some are due in June of 2025, and some are due, we're due in June of 2026. So, the the communities on the west side have already begun this process. And so, we're not going to be the guinea pigs for this. They will be, as Commerce likes to put it, they're building the plane as they're flying it. And so, but we'll have the, we will have the benefit of what others have done. The other thing that the consultant that we're going to bring on, which is our on-call, our on-call engineer parametrics, recently merged with another firm that, whose specialization was in this area, and they've already been working with communities on the west side of the state to complete some of this work. So, that is who we will be contracting with, through a task order with our on-call engineer. And so, we'll have the benefit of that. But yes, there are a number of other communities that have received the grant. Nobody has yet completed the process. And as I said, Commerce is literally writing the guidance as we speak. I'm sorry, say that again?
What is the value of the consultant contract?
I'm having a really hard time understanding, I'm sorry.
What is the value of the consultant contract?
What is the value of this consultant contract?
Yes.
So, we don't have the contract yet, we do have a scope for it. I believe it's 255,000 in this biennium, which, and 145,000 in the next biennium. We're reserving 100,000 for actually, actual implementation. So, we're entitled to a full 500,000 as a community, so.
Can you communicate to us what cities have started this process?
So, I can, give me a second.
Please somebody to look at that. There are several states that that's currently set at 90% of the greenhouse
Whoever's speaking, can you please speak into your microphone, I can't hear you.
Into it, Lisa, there.
Thank you.
Transportation accounts for 29% of the country's greenhouse gas, and there's a goal, national goal, of a reduction of 20% vehicle miles traveled, things like that. So, this has been going on for at least three years that I've heard of it.
Yeah, it has, it has, in the state of Washington, where the new requirement is, it has been going on for less than that. But these west-side communities, I'm going to share with you, if you give me a second, trying to find it. I believe
Do it now, just, you got a chance, send it to me an email, so then
Well, here, I've got it, I've got it here. So, some of the examples. Lewis County is one that's done some on this already. I want to say Amy, do you recall the other one that's everybody's touting as the example? I think I have it here, let me see if I can find this. I'll have to send it to you, I can't find it.
That's fine.
But yeah, there are others, and obviously, we're going to be relying on those. Whoever's speaking, please speak into your microphone, I can't hear you.
It's a better, green light, batteries are probably dead. That one's red.
Other questions?
Yep. Thank you, Lisa, two questions. One, you sent me, or us, or the group, your PowerPoint with the information you just shared.
Yeah, absolutely.
Unless you already have, I have a little trouble getting my emails, but we'll work that out. My second question is, the bond amount is 500,000. When would we expect to see the funds distributed, and is it based on the deliverable dates?
Yeah, so the grant is, it's a grant, not a bond. The grant is payable upon deliverables, and each deliverable has a cost associated with it. I believe I included in your package the entire scope of the grant, but if I did not, I can certainly send you that.
No, you did, I was just curious, I'm looking at your blacked-out dates where it says deliverable on your chart, and
Oh, yeah, so those are our target dates for those deliverables. Now, keep in mind that we also thought we were going to start in February, and Commerce has been slow to turn this around. So, we did, Council did approve the grant contract at their last meeting, but they haven't sent us the docu-sign, Commerce has not sent the docu-sign for us to execute yet. But we are moving forward, we will be getting a proposal from the, or a task order from the consultants to get this project underway.
The funds are distributed as you produce, basically?
Yes, yes.
And then, one last question, when you get to the end of the program here in 2026, or whatever your end date is, 2027?
2026.
26. Do you anticipate any policies, programs, anything that we may suggest that we incorporate to be a continuing expense beyond what the funds are going to provide for?
Well, so, yeah, potentially, yes. The reason why we saved 100,000 for implementation, the implementation dollars can only be used for planning or studies. They can't be used for capital, but an example might be to do a study to look at how we would incorporate solar into our city facilities, as an example. Or some other policies like that, if there are things that we can do to further promote or further educate or whatever on the value of trip reduction. So, there are things that, the reason why we left that 100,000 as an implementation to be determined was because presumably, the policies that come out of the comp plan will guide us towards what we may want to do. By the way, one of the things that has changed with the comprehensive plan from previous iterations is that we now are only going to have to do an update every 10 years. However, at the five-year mark, we are going to need to assess our progress implementing the plan. And so, this is one of the pieces that we'll need to be, that we will need to be assessing. So, again, the 500,000, from what I understand, we left the 100,000 in the 26 to 20, in the 2025 to 2027 biennium, but we could roll that over to a future biennium if we didn't have a project yet ready to take off the table.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other question?
Yes.
Could you have one? It's more of an administrative thing. The colors on this chart, to me, are a little bit hard to read, particularly the one that's the blue. Is there a way to change that, or is that?
Yeah, that was, it just made it clearer to color-code the different tasks for visual but yes, I can change the colors on the chart.
Just the first one there, from my perspective. A light blue instead of the purple.
Lisa, one quick question, since climate notoriously ignores lines on a map.
Can you speak a little closer to your mic, please, Joe?
It's, it won't stay on, it's
It's, that's better.
Yours isn't on either. It is, okay, now it is. Since climate notoriously ignores lines on a map, what is our area of responsibility to be?
It's only the City of Liberty Lake. So, we're responsible, the comprehensive plan is about goals and policies. Our goals and policies relate specifically to what we're doing here in the City of Liberty Lake. But if I can go back a couple slides, maybe if I can, it doesn't seem to want to let me do that, but if I can. Again, we're looking to set goals related to greenhouse gas emissions that are produced within the City of Liberty Lake by commute trips, also potentially by some of our industry, although we don't have a lot of heavy industry, but that's one. And again, or vehicle miles traveled. And that's, again, something that we have the ability to at least set goals in policy, goals through transportation policies. We, I'm not even sure how accurate the mapping is on the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, but again, I think that we'll learn more as we go. We're using tools, as I said, that are available through Ecology and WashDOT. So, again, this is something that we will dig into. I think that we'll have to, as we look at our policies, well, one of the things the consultant can help us understand is how accurate the tools are, and if we can use them to assess how we're progressing. And that needs to be incorporated into the tools that we are, or the policies that we're identifying, is how we set those goals and to be realistic.
So, you don't see us dealing with things like landscaping, surface water, anything like that?
So, no, I tend not to, as far as greenhouse gas emissions go. In terms of climate resiliency, that may be a different question. Just be, but again, I think that, I think that the I think we're more focused on some of the, some of the real-world issues that we're likely to face, and that's why I was really pointing out the things that we, I think that we see as potential. And that is the impact of 100-year storm and stormwater and flood plains. That's a biggie that we need to consider. Impacts to roof and roof snow loads and wildfire risks. Those are bigger issues, and I think that, I mean, I may be surprised, but we'll get into it, and we'll dig into it, and as we dig into it and dig into the data and look at what the potential is and what best practices are elsewhere, I think that we'll be able to come up with reasonable goals and policies for the city to meet the requirements.
Any other questions? Okay, we can move on to propose amendment for fueling stations.
Yeah, so let me give you a context before we jump into this. The context is that we met with a potential developer looking at some sites in the freeway commercial and River District Freeway Commercial Zones who are interested in looking at potentially, the primary use is is the main focus, but is integral to the primary use. They do also have an accessory fueling scenario. And while the mayor is not taking a position one way or another on this use, they are going through some analysis and due diligence, probably the biggest thing they're going to have to look at is traffic. And, but the mayor did ask that we move forward, that we basically move this forward as a city-initiated proposal to see what Planning Commission and City Council felt about making some changes to our fueling fueling station requirements within the C2 and RDC zones. So, just to give you, just to start out, kind of the discussion, the areas in red on this map are your freeway commercial and the River District Freeway Commercial Zones. And as you can see, the gas stations and convenience stores, so it's kind of a combined use, are listed as a limited use in the C2 zone and the RDC zone. And the standards for the limited use are the same in both in both zones, and that is for a gas/convenience store. Underground storage tanks and stormwater disposal shall not be located within 1,000-foot radius of a wellhead. It's a good plan. Pump islands and other fuel dispensing tanks, e.g. propane, shall be located at least 25 feet from the right Pump islands and other fuel dispensing tanks, E G propane, shall be located at least twenty five feet from the right away lines. And convenience stores, gas stations shall not exceed eight pump sites. Um, and the building footprint area shall not exceed eight thousand square feet per lot. A pump site is, is one dispenser which may be double sided. So, the challenge is that this user is not a convenience store, and I can actually think of a fair number of users. That may want to have an accessory, um, an accessory, uh. An accessory fueling station as part of their operation. That would be allowed uses within the C two or R two zone, uh, or C two or R D C zone. The proposed new use category is an accessory fueling station. With, uh, we're proposing that it be a limited use in the R D C and C two freeway commercial zones. Um, and it must be accessory to a permitted principal use within the zone. And, um, what the potential standards could look like. Uh, to meet these requirements is that basically. Uh, fueling stations must be accessory to a principal use that is permitted within the zone. Underground storage tanks and stormwater disposal shall not be located within the thousand foot radius of a wellhead. Um, pump stations and other fuel dispensing tanks, E G propane, shall not be, shall be located at least twenty five feet from the right away lines. Uh, fueling stations shall not exceed twelve pump sites, a pump site is one dispenser which may be double sided. And fueling stations must not front on an arterial street. The thought process being that, um, if it truly is accessory to a principal use. It should be subservient to that use, so you don't want it on an arterial, you want it set back from behind. The principal use or setback, um, such that it's not located in the arterial stream. If it's truly accessory, it shouldn't be, the fueling station shouldn't be a pass by trip. If that makes sense. So that's the discussion that, um, we've had and, um. Really a potential change, the big change is because you're not talking about a little convenience store, you're talking about a larger. Facility. We don't have the size limitations, number one. Number two, um, we're proposing that they be allowed up to twelve pump sites. Now, a- again, uh, we don't have a dog in the fight, we're just processing, uh, the request. To, uh, to. See what your thoughts are and to, um, at least, um, bring it through the process. So, um, with that, that's, that's the story, I'd love to hear your thoughts on it.
This is a.
Commissioner Bonker.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. With respect to what this would look like. So a fueling station with, let's say, twelve pump sites. Can you tell me, uh, an existing site that would be comparable to what this is talking about, so I can kind of visualize it in my mind? In other words, would this be like one of the big truck stops in Post Falls, or what, what is this like?
It could be that, it could be, um, like a warehouse operation that has their own fueling station. It could be, um, a big box store with, um, with an accessory, uh, fueling station. So, um, I can't think of a specific example off the top of my head. Um, I've seen a lot of them, um, in fact, um. We've heard before from convenience stores that they feel like the, uh, eight pump limit is, uh, limiting. Um, and, but again, that has been our standard for a very long time for convenience stores. Again, this use is not a convenience store. I'm sorry, uh, can you speak into the?
To, to have a conversation on this is difficult for me anyway, without having some kind of visual reference of what it would look like.
I can certainly bring that back to you at our next meeting, I can find one and take some pictures.
That's what they're talking about, yeah, and then the other thing is that, uh. With this resp- with respect to this proposed limited use, uh, would this, uh, encompass, uh, E V fueling? Recharging?
Uh, it, it could, not necessarily, but it could, and actually, when I think about it, um, Tesla has more than, uh. Twelve pump sites, if you will, but they're not pump sites, they're charging stations, so that would be an example. That would be one example in the community where we have more, uh, fueling stations, they're just not pump stations.
Well, when you think about this proposed limited use, you might wanna think about, uh, E V charging.
And would you, would you think that we would want to limit, limit it to? Fuel pumping stations and or E V stations?
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Molnitz.
Make sure this is on, if you can hear me, um, can you please provide, uh, examples, are these similar? Proposed standards allowed in any of the other zones right now, or are we just looking to add these?
No, no, so i- if we go back to the use standards, there we go. So if you, if, uh, we do have, um. Gas stations and convenience stores are allowed by limited use only in M three, C one and C two. C one and C two, the standards are the same that I showed you. In C, in M three, um, it's only allowed if it's replacing an existing gas station. Plus, the, the same standards, so elsewhere we only allow for. Um, elsewhere we only allow for the eight pumps, which could be double sided, so it's a total of sixteen stations.
So the proposal would just be changing the standards for the, uh, River District and the C two?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other question?
Yes.
Yeah, sir.
In regards to auxiliary fuel. What is, what are we actually calling auxiliary fuel, because the only thing I can think of is gas, propane or E V. I don't think too many people are gonna put little hydrogen stations in their, in their backyard.
So this, well, it wouldn't be in their backyard, number one. So, so we don't allow residential uses in the C two zone. This would be more of a commercial slash industrial type of use. And it would be, have to be accessory to the principal use that's allowed in these zones. And so, um, but yes, you are correct, you are correct that it's. It could be, it could be that, but at some point in the future, it may be hydrogen, I don't know, um, it's a possibility.
Well, I guess my, my point is, it, I think it needs to be more specific. Instead of just general, uh, comment about accessory stations, I think it should.
Well, so there, there's a definition, and I probably should have included that in there, there is. Uh, a definition, um, in the, in the zoning code and. Because I am operating now on a less than ideal, uh, V P N system, I can't look it up right now.
Okay, thank you.
I will, so, what I'm hearing is, uh, if I bring it back next time, you'd like A visuals. Stations. B, the definition, the definition for, for fuel pumps. Pump sites.
And I think that definition would actually have a definite impact on the number of, of pumps or sites. Whether it, it, the sites required for, for gasoline, of course, is going to be significantly larger. Than that for an E V station.
Actually, that's not true. Perhaps the, the underground facilities are larger, but the above ground facilities are not.
Okay.
Other questions, Commissioner Foryo.
Thank you, uh, Lisa, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the difference between the current limited use as it stands today. For those zones versus what you proposed in the red, and I'm getting the, today's. We allow eight pumps today, and you, you want us, you're suggesting that we have. Considered.
We allow eight pumps today for a gas, for a convenience store. And the convenience store can't be more than eight thousand square feet, so we're limi- limiting the size of the convenience store. And we're limiting the number of pumps. This is proposing to, um, allow for an accessory fueling station. For a larger user, whether it's a warehouse, whether it's, uh, whether it's a box store, whether it's a. Tractor sales or whatever, or an R V, uh, or, or an R V, uh, sales and service.
Uh, uh, I guess I understand, but I'm just trying to compare what we have today versus what you're, what we're.
So this is what, so thi- these are the changes. The changes are number one, that it's not limited to a convenience store. We're allowing it as an accessory use to, to a larger permitted use within the C two zone, that's number one. Number two is that, um, that, um, instead of eight pumps, we're. We're proposing twelve pumps now, the, the pump sites, which can be double sided. In the convenience store, it's eight that can be double sided, in this application, it would be twelve that's double sided. The third thing is that we're making it clear that this is not. A workaround to have a larger gas station. So it has to be, it has to be accessory to a principal use that is permitted within the zone. And it's only applicable in the C two and R D C zones.
Commissioner Molnitz.
Is there potential to get around the loophole of, say, a large truck stop coming in and trying to. Maneuver their way in to specify that the, um, eight pump limit shall remain in effect for anything. Convenience store, truck stop, add that sort of language in there so that there isn't potential for that, because. An R V dealer or U P S or whatever else we're thinking warehouse wise isn't gonna need twelve pumps, in my opinion.
But we have a user that does, and it's not, it's not a truck stop. A potential user.
But what I'm saying is, can we maybe potentially put that language in there to prevent that from happening?
I could look at some, I could look at some language around the limitations, uh, limitations.
I would also imagine that the existing, that I know. Convenience store or stores in that zone may be a little miffed by the change in. The standards if they weren't allowed to have twelve at the time.
Yes, but we don't have any gas stations in those zones.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I'm assuming accessory unit means are their vehicles only, or are they gonna be selling to the public as well?
They could be selling to the public or to their members, I guess.
So that twelve pump site is up to twenty four vehicles at a time?
Yes.
That's huge traffic issue in my mind.
Well, they, so, so, I, I'm not addressing the traffic issue. Um, in fact, I'm not sure that this, this will even fly based upon the traffic. Uh, the mayor has suggested that we at least ask the question about the pumps. So while they're doing their due diligence related to, uh, traffic analysis, but, um, but again, I think that they've got. They've got a, a fairly large hurdle.
So let's face it, we're looking at a gas station?
We are not looking at a gas station, but it, but the accessory use would have the appearance of a gas station. Which is why it needs to be subservient to the larger use that's being proposed for the site. Which means that's why it has to be set back, um, and not fronting on an arterial.
Lisa, could you put your zoning map back up, please?
Sure.
And what color is C one and two?
So C one is yellow, C two is red.
Is there not a gas station on the corner of Harvard and Mission that's in the red zone? It's hard to see on the map. There is? Within that, that was my original question, so I just wanted clarification, please, um. Yes, right.
Oh, I guess, yeah, there is.
Okay.
They don't, they don't have, they don't have room for eight pumps on there.
Okay, true.
Is there an applicant already?
I'm sorry, say again?
So, I'm assuming there's an applicant.
There, well, there's, there is a pre applicant. So, um, they haven't even come in for their pre-application conference, but we've had several. Uh, informal meetings with them, uh, so it's not, I don't, it's not public record yet.
We, the one, one I application, as I look at the color coded map here, is. The potential for this to apply to, if they ever do it, the National Guard Armory.
It could potentially, but everything that I've heard is that, um, they, they don't, they only wanna do land lease. And they're asking way too much for the property. That's what I've heard from every developer who's looked at that site.
Well, in this, in my opinion, this seems to fly in the face of us trying to limit greenhouse gases.
That's a fine answer, and, um, a- a- again, we're taking it through the process, we're not presuming what the answer to this process will be. But I, I'm happy to bring this back with a little bit more information, give you some visuals on. Uh, existing gas stations with, uh, twelve, uh, two sided pumping units. Uh, give you the definition of the, uh, pump sites and. Also possibly propose some limitations as, as, uh, Troy had suggested. Is there anything else?
Yeah, one last question.
On this one?
When you're talking about principal use, um, is there, on the convenience store, there's a square footage associated? Would there be a square footage associated with the principal use? Or is it unlimited, as long as it fits on the lot for the percentage and?
Yeah, I, I would say that, that I, I'm, there's not, there's not. A maximum what's driven, it's driven by. The amount of parking and the amount of land area and the amount of, uh, stormwater and, um, all that stuff. So there's not a maximum anywhere in the code, um, this limited use has a maximum related to convenience stores. So it's very speci- it's specific to, that, that's the problem, is that, that the gas station is specific to a convenience store. And so it's, um. And I'm not, I'm not. I'm not willing to extrapolate for another user that's not a convenience store. Because I think it, i- i- it may be a different case.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Uh, my question is, do you know what the configuration will be like, would it be in a horizontal, excuse me, yeah, yeah, horizontal? Or vertical?
I don't at this point, we were supposed to, uh, have a pre-application conference. Um, with materials to be submitted, and that's been postponed, so I don't have any idea what the configuration would be.
Okay, that, that would be very important.
Any other questions, Mr. Chair, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Lisa, it's Charlie, um, other than the current applicant coming in and talking about this possibility. Have you or the mayor had any other discussions with residents of Liberty Lake about the, about the lack of fueling facilities in the city?
I have not heard that to be an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, other questions? Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
Thank you all.
Next, we're citizen comments, any citizens online? Okay, thank you. Secretary's report. Ms. Key?
I don't have a lot for you, we'll be bringing this back at the next meeting along with, um. The, uh, comp plan work program, it's not gonna be as detailed as the resiliency grant, because we're gonna have to. Uh, kind of, uh, scale up. For that, but, but, but we'll get, we'll, we'll get you started so that you kind of have a visual on. Uh, what the, the work that we're facing coming up on this. On this comp plan, excuse me. Um. Amy, Kathy, did you guys have anything else for the Planning Commission?
Nope.
I think, I thank you for bearing with me, with my, uh.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? True. Lisa, where are we with the, um. The metrics and the standards for the community events? Uh, discussion we had months ago.
That's, that's a very good, that's a very good question, we have a draft of a new application. And, um, some guidelines, so, some standard operating procedures, if you will, guidelines. For, um, addressing those, we have put a pin in it because we have a new, uh. Parks and Recreation Coordinator, starting in, um, I believe it's March fourth. And so, we're going to give him, since he's gonna be the person who's responsible for. Um, implementing it, we'd like to give him. A shot at reviewing it and tweaking it before we, before we launch it. Once he's comfortable with it, we're gonna be sending out the application to some of our, um. Legacy events to do a test drive on the application, it's gonna be electronic. And we'll be able to update you on that, um, once, um. Uh, Mikhail is on board.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, before we begin, uh, Planning Commissioner reports. Uh, let the record show Commissioner Robbins, uh, arrived at four forty. Thank you, Commissioner reports? Anyone?
I'm gonna mute myself, sorry.
Oh, well, no reports. Any other reports? I'll hear a motion for adjournment. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Jinx, is there a second? Commissioner Garcia, second, all in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, thank you.
Thank you all.
Everyone.